All right, thank you for all being here tonight. Is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there's none, any.
Need a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion by Lindsey and Amy, are you seconded? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. No one wanted to speak tonight, but thank you guys for coming. Reports, we will move on to the middle school reports.
Yeah, I think Matt was going to go first.
Oh, okay.
Want me to pass it on, just kind of to give some shape to some conversations that we would have at a high school level. And as we take a look at our needs over the next few years, we have a couple of things that kind of come into play. Number one, we know that we have some very valuable people who are going to be checking out their second career in life as they plan on retiring in the near future and those types of things too. So we anticipate program changing or a difficult time trying to find people to fill those shoes as they exit from us. So that comes as part of our conversation as well. But really, what we were just kind of doing is getting a 10,000-foot view, as Jake would say, and starting the conversation up about what are we going to project our needs are for next year, two and three years out, as we told expand with students. And we have other programming needs as we figure out better ways of doing business. So there's a group of us that went to Fergus Falls. We've kind of sequestered a room there, so you know what it's like when you have a retreat onsite. Sometimes you get more interruptions than you do business done. And we invited Troy Haugen to walk us through and facilitate a conversation, which initially just kind of started out with, what do you want your students to exit with? What do you want for your students? And it's interesting because with representation from across the core elective areas, our conversation drifted to those skill sets that we want to see kids lead with in general. What is perseverance? What is that active ability to solve problems? And of course, we want our kids to graduate. It had a lot of those bigger skills that we just exited anywhere and were leveraged for success elsewhere. And that kind of laid out a conversation as how are we getting those skills in our students' hands? And what does that look like in each of our areas? One of the things that we're trying to do is provide a much more deliberate flow of information for our students so that when they start and they have a certain interest as they want to exit in either career or college readiness, that they have a scaffolding of classes that might be a suggested path for them as they start deliberately looking and laying out actually their courses that they want to take over the next four years. And we all know that can change, because their interests might change. But we want to take the mystery out of scheduling for people. And we also want to see where are our holes and where are we strong? So after that, we did an exercise that kind of included a bigger wheel. This is actually very colorful and nice online. But these are college and career clusters. So each of these areas kind of show a roadmap of what you need to do to be able to meet some of the requirements of those different areas as you see them identified for us on that wheel. So we literally laid the courses that kind of met each of those areas in those areas and just kind of took a step back and said, okay, how do we cluster this information? So we have pathways for students to say, hey, does all of this subject content is more relevant to my interests? And started looking at how they can lay out their pattern for registration over the next few years. The other thing it did for us, it made us a little reflective of what are their strengths and where can we improve our programming? Is what we're doing still relevant? Are we exiting kids with the information that's going to actually give them leverage to be successful? So we started kind of having that bigger conversation about that. And then talking about our near future needs, which would be revamping our student course guide for the following year for registration at a decent time. And then also, where are we going to be at for our planning purposes two and three years out? How can we get the resources in the hands of our instructors so that they can make those important decisions for our students? So as we took a walk through that, we also looked at some other resources online. That this, I would really invite you to take a look at this deed, Minnesota Gov site. It gives you great, in the real moment, information about our region, what the current work needs are, what the colleges' opportunities are for students, and what programming needs to go into place to kind of reach those different career fields. So as a group, we kind of walked through that for a little while. And Troy helped point out some interesting patterns and opportunities for our students. So that again, is to give a little credibility to the purpose in which we're doing this. We're looking at another couple of important things too, is to take a look at our handbook and our course guide. They actually have two different really important sets of information. And some of that information should really belong in the same spot. For example, the number of requirements it takes to graduate from DGF is not in our handbook, it's in our course guide. So we want to do some merging of some of that language, so we don't have two spots to go to to look for that information. And as we do that, we're making a few other recommendations in the near future as well. For example, we have some policies that are still hanging out there a little bit as far as the number of credits or the way we weight grades for our advanced classes, our PSEO classes. Some of that conversation is still percolating whether we're going to do the same thing in-house as we are going to do for the final transcripts. So what I mean by that is the conversation is still needing some more attention is do our concurrent classes and PSEO classes internally allow for more weight to be added to them for classroom and those types of things? Or do we just go for it across the board? So those are some of the important conversations we're bringing final recommendations back to this group for as well. I have shared the course guide folder, I believe, and I hope that it is, in the handbook folder just because it made sense for it to be there. If you want to take a look at some of the other line item pieces that we've, we're changing in language. Any other questions?
And we'll double check to make sure if it is a Google Doc, because I know we've had some conversations about some people maybe not opening, being able to open up Google Docs. It will, if it is, if you can't open one of those type of documents, send us an email, send it to Brooke. And then we'll just make sure that in that folder, we make a copy, that is a Word copy of it. Because if you don't have Google on your computer, then it's not going to open for you. But if she just makes another Word copy of the same thing, then we're fine.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, Mrs. Critchley, we're up.
All right. I'm going to keep rapping, spend a day. Been busy. So I thought to kick off the year, what I would do is just share with you our two goals and then some of the things that we have been working on kind of late this summer and then this fall to get things rolling and give you some examples. So if you have any questions, let me know. If not, then I'll just keep rolling here. So the first goal that we have is DGF Middle School invest resources to support the implementation of the middle school's concept for the success of all students. Studies show that this age level, there's certain things at work that support them as they go through those middle school years that are so difficult for some and exploring and all those other things. And so we have some things at the middle school that I believe support that, and I just want to share that with you. One of the things is the concept of advisory. So we have advisory right away in the morning. And at the end of the day, the kids go back to their advisory. Some of the grade levels, like the sixth grade does more of a rebel power hour where the kids are moving throughout the week to different areas that they might need assistance with. And then they also have priority intervention, which means maybe somebody's struggling with a certain concept in math. And so Mrs. Roloff wants those kids on Tuesdays and they come into her room for about 25 minutes. Seventh and eighth grade are doing a little bit different. Seventh grade is polling kids as they needed. And eighth grade is allowing the students to ask for help more, sometimes the teachers will poll them. So that's part of that. And the big thing about advisories is relationships, not only with a teacher, with an adult in the building, but also with each other. And we believe that kind of traveling through the day, the beginning of the day and the end of the day, some of the things that they do during advisories, the teachers are really good about making some intentional efforts to build a team. And you'll find some kids that maybe haven't gotten to know each other before will get to know each other and it builds up that climate in the building, not so many divisions, those type of things. The rebel power hour at a middle school usually has some type of intervention and enrichment opportunity. And so that's why we have that part of our schedule, we believe that's important. We, the sixth grade team did not have it last year. They were adamant about trying to find a way to bring it back this year. So that's when we added some minutes on and switched things in a little bit, so we're able to do that. With the handouts that I gave you, the first handout is this, I believe. And this is something that is on the National Middle School website. And it basically talks about, if you're a middle-level educator, these are some of the things you can believe. And I've said this before, but whatever level you're at, you really should have a passion for that level. Because teaching is a hard, hard job. And everybody has the areas that they're, that they're more comfortable with and with middle school teachers. These are some of the things that they believe in. If you watch them, you, you see that, you know? Part of it is having a lot of humor, to be honest with you, at this age. So this is a little bit about when you're talking about the middle school philosophy, these are some of the things that you should believe. And then this is, and I gave this out a couple of years ago and I need to do it again. It says, "This we believe keys to educating young adolescents, then 16 characteristics." And underneath there, they're organized into curriculum, instruction, assessment, leadership and organization, culture and community. And I could explain those at another time, but it really, if I go through the middle school, our DGF middle school, we really are filling a lot of those areas. The next piece is, "We want to promote and celebrate positive behavior." It's a lot more fun to have them come into the office to celebrate things that are going well than the other way. And so we have a PBIS team. On that team is, well, Kimberly's on it, and Katie Omen, Cindy Millar, Barbara Roloff, Angie Helgerson, and Katie Omen. And the team met for the first time this year last week. And we had discussed some organization. So you'll have an agenda in there to kind of get an idea what this team does. And I think that's one of the things I want to talk about a lot, is there's different people within the middle school that take on roles that really help support that climate. And, you know, the leadership team, the PBIS team, the PLCs, it really, really does, they do a great job. So we try to take notes, we try to get these out to people. Sometimes I forget, but I try to most of the time, get my, the notes, the meeting notes out to the whole staff so they feel involved and that they're part of that. They also know who they can go to on the grade level team if there are any suggestions they may have for us. Counseling is a huge part, that mental health support, social, emotional support in a middle school. As you know, we have Katie and Angie that work with us on that. And they, Angie's working mostly with the sixth and seventh graders and Katie's working also with the eighth and ninth graders. We really like that idea because it allows for that gap between eighth and ninth grade. We are finding that if Angie just started, or Katie just started in ninth grade, there are some stories and some things that would be good for the kids, the people at the high school to know and having that connection really made a difference. The other thing is it allows Katie to really focus on the eighth grade career and career readiness in the eighth grade. She still supervises and offers suggestions. But you know, we have Avid now, and Avid is sixth and seventh grade is covering a lot of that. So it just made sense to kind of focus that and more on that area. Student council, we also want to provide some leadership for students. This month, or this week is Red Ribbon Week. And so the kids are doing such a great job organizing. I didn't even know that today they're putting up a photo book. I didn't even know that they have organized it all with the teachers and it's wonderful and they're wearing red. And so they're doing different things like this. We'll do a kindness week and anti-bullying, trying to do some of those things, putting in the hands of kids. Because I tell you what, when you give them a little bit guidance, they run with things and they do a great job. The other piece that I wanted to share with you tonight is, there's this sheet right here that says IGP SAMR requirements for 1718. Those are the individual goals and also the SAMR sheet that each of the teachers complete. And they have to have them in by November 8th. And they can make an appointment with us or they can share them with us by Google. And I have permission from Jessia, to share hers from last year, Jessia Hocker. And the first one that she had was a goal that said, "Students will demonstrate empathy, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, creativity while engaging in interdisciplinary project-based learning exercise." This was a PBL project that she did with Mrs. Westberg last year. And then you can see that there's strategies, assessments, resources. So this is one of the things that the teachers are doing to take control of their own professional development or growth. And maybe some of it will be to support that, they'll need to attend a conference or work with a colleague. There's different areas, things that they might do action steps to achieve that. The other one is the SAMR self-assessment and goal-making. I believe this is our third or fourth year using this at the middle school. We started this when we implemented the one-to-one technology. We just wanted to be a little bit intentional about how we were using it and to, first of all, assess our growth and then where we wanted to go with it. And the first year, we just started off saying, use it where it makes sense. Use technology when maybe you couldn't get your hands on a cart before, but you'd like to get your hands on a cart, a computer cart, and now you have them in your classroom. So instead of going darn, I wish I had computers, use them during that time. And I tell you what, these teachers have just ran with it. And it's, there's definitely been some headaches, Kimberly would agree with that. But for the most part, I think that it's been just a wonderful experience. So in the darker gray, I think when you're looking at Jessia's there, she self-assessed where she was in that. And then she wrote a statement on there about where she wanted to go. I think I printed that all off. So I just thought you might like to see an example of that, because that's what keeps people busy. Another big part of the middle school concept is having kids get a little idea of what they might be interested in, what they might be good in. So we have our exploratory classes, our family consumer science, our art and our tech ed. In addition to that, we try to do different things within the classroom, whether it's a STEAM activity. We have the, we participate in the National Code Day. We have your higher days, which are STEAM days, to give kids exploration so that when they get to the high school, they have at least thought of some of those things. I did an observation today in a class where they were doing a career unit. It was really, really fun to go around and see the different things that they were thinking about. And they're also looking at salary, of course their ideas of salaries are pretty funny, but they were researching them. But also what kind of education they needed to get, where they could, well, a lot of them wanted to know where they could work in the Fargo-Moorhead area, which I thought was interesting. And, you know, they were naming Sanford and Essentia and John Deere, and it was really, really fun to hear. So we try to give some of those opportunities to our kids, which is why we've done some of the STEAM things, the Code Days and your higher days. Our second goal is, "DGF Middle School provide resources and programming to ensure college and career readiness for all students." A big piece of that is our Avid implementation. And if you take this Avid team meeting, as you know, a group of us this summer went to Avid training. It's basically that's everybody that is listed as one of those stars on it, listed on the top. And then plus Katie Omen, who works for us half-time, she went the year before. So if you had Katie Omen, she's supposed to be on this, we just, she wasn't at this meeting, so we didn't have it on there. But if you look at it, we have some goals. If we're going to be an Avid school, we need to have some goals, some things that we want to accomplish this year. So we sat down and said, what's realistic for us? What do we want to do besides the Avid classes? What are some of the things that we want to do? And if you go, the first goal was for the 2017-8 school year, we will introduce the rest of the staff that did not go to Avid. Strategies, will introduce them to Avid strategies at a pace of one every two months by the Avid site team. So I was really, I thought this was really cool. So they came up with the strategies and then they took the action steps. And we have so far followed every single one of those action steps. We just did the October 6th one, we did the Wicker and the organization piece of the Wicker. And then you can see how we're going to follow through this year. And we have more people that are interested in attending Avid next year. I feel real good about how we are spreading that throughout our school. You know, we had, you know, I think some of the things we told you before is how they celebrate, you know, whether it's whoosh. And so I guess we had some football team doing it, we had some of the volleyball team doing it. And so I think it's really fun to see how it's implementing, how it's going into our climate. And then we talked about how it wasn't even measurable. And so we have to do this if we're going to achieve our goal, we want to take people, some of the things that we want to do. We have our team meetings, and so Wednesday we'll have another team meeting. And at that team meeting, we will talk about our next professional development training. And then we talked about how do we build and sustain the Avid culture. So, you know, the evidence of use, college posters, Katie has hung up the college banners all up and down the, all up and down the seventh and eighth, sixth, seventh and eighth grade hallway, that one main hallway. So kids are seeing different colleges. It's great to look at NDSU, MSUM, Imadriga, but there's other colleges out there. So we're getting them exposed to those and those are all going up and down the hallway. Presentation of the school board, here's one. I'd love to bring Dana and LeAnn back later and have them talk to you about their, I still need to do the website. So we definitely don't have all that book things, but this is a year-long plan. So if anybody asks you a little bit about Avid, our plan for this year, I think this document does a really nice job about what our goals are. I talked a little bit about the higher days, we're probably going to do two of those this year. If you remember what those are, those kids get a problem and they have to work through that problem and they present at the end of the day to the community members. We will do that again, we will have the Code Day. In the Avid classrooms, we are going to have speakers come in and talk to the kids. So they see people that, somebody is a probation officer, they see somebody that has a criminal justice degree in what they're doing, all these areas that they're interested in, real people, maybe mom and dads, maybe aunt, uncles, grandmas, whoever they could find. But having them come in and really talk about what that means. And so they're, they're really finding out what a real day looks like. The other piece that I think kind of supports everything we do is our climate in the middle school. One of the things that we do, there's this one called Meetin' in the Middle, and that's on purpose, we say that. Every, there's, you can see they're divided by clusters. And we, we just had the middle school one, we did a breakfast for the staff. And we did it the last day in September, so we survived the first month type of thing. And we had a breakfast. I believe the sixth grade is doing some type of Halloween or Jewish hot luck thing, I'm not sure. And so every month, we do something like that, it's a time for us to get together. I actually couldn't go to the last one because I had to be, I did deliver in April, but I had to be somewhere. And so I wasn't able to be at that one. But I heard there was good attendance, just gives people time to slow down. And maybe if you're a seventh grade teacher, you're going to have to see one of the sixth grade teachers, it'll give you a chance to talk. The other piece that you have right there, the U-Rock one, is just something silly that I came up with with our leadership team last, not this past summer, but the summer before. And we actually have, I think it's four rocks that are painted silver, and then Jessia decorated them, it's U-Rock. And what you do is you fill this out, you know, to Kimberly, Wally, U-Rock because of all the things you do for our students and thank you for all you do. And then she gets this with the U-Rock for a month and it sits on her desk. She gets to keep the piece of paper, tape it up. I got one last year, I still have it hanging up. And then you hand it off to the next person at the next staff meeting. So it's a way for us to appreciate each other, say thank you for all you do, this is a tough job, and that we do appreciate you. And kindness week is a big thing that we do. That will be in February, we'll involve the, I don't have a handle on that, but we'll involve the student council on that. We still, I know Angie, our counselor, hung up all sorts of things throughout the building. It's a kindness matter, U-Rock, a bunch of different things. And so that was kind of fun for us to see. PLCs, so the PLCs meet, and then this, I thought you probably hear PLCs all the time, but this is what their, kind of their agenda is every time they meet. And of course, it fluctuates on how heavy it is on one thing, depending on what's occurring. A lot of times, it's about the student needs and concerns.
Would you say that's a majority?
Which is good, it gives them a time together as a team to find out what might be working in Kimberly's class and help a student in another class. If everybody's, if a student's not experienced success, maybe we need to bring the parents in and talk to them, say, is there something we could do to help, here's what we're seeing? And so this is a time for them to get together, they're busy people, it's built in during their day, and they're able to do that, to support our students. Another big piece about that is professional development opportunities. So we have people that are going to the middle school conference, we have people that are going to TIES, and we have people that are interested in different areas, maybe it's special education or an art educator, somebody that wants to go to something in their career because they want to learn something new. I know Jessia wants to go to one that's on, that is a STEAM conference, an art conference, but it's focusing on STEAM. And so that is something too that we, I think really helps with climate, is when people are encouraged to go into their chosen area and be around other people, to kind of have that same ideas and passion that you do. And the middle school conference is really fun because y'all kind of get what that age is like and it's fun to be in that group. The leadership team, so we meet twice a month on Wednesday mornings. And what I usually do is four or five days before the leadership meeting is I send out an agenda to them and it's open, which means that they have edit rights. And they are representing, representing different grade levels. So, you know, Bryant Ferguson, he represents the eighth grade. So if Bryant wants, if there's something that his eighth grade team wants brought to leadership, it's his job to put it on here, bring it, be informed enough to be able to share it, and then we help problem solve. And that's a big piece about it, is it's a problem solving, it's suggestions. And a lot of times, one team will say, oh, this is what worked for us during that time, maybe you can try it. And then one person takes notes and then we send those notes out to the entire staff. So it is a chance for people to be heard, for us to do some actual problem solving. An example of that is our last one, trimester dates. You know, we looked at them, they're 57, 57, 59. Well, there was a new leadership team member, they'd go, why aren't they all even, or closer anyways? And we talked about how the fact that in the spring, we have so much time that goes to testing, so we decided to put that one a little bit heavier. And so we're able to explain those things. And then we do all the approvals for professional development during this time too. That, I can't appreciate this team enough. We meet in the summer, we meet a lot, and they are problem solvers and they're really people that help a lot in the building, so I appreciate them. And then the biggest thing, I think, is just to support and give people time, finding that time, whether it's me or a colleague, and having some fun with it. I mean, the other day, I was doing middle school lunch and there was a bee, it was probably a couple of weeks ago, a bee that was flying around and I was standing by a boy right here where the applesauce was open. A boy crossed the table, took his empty applesauce and went boom in the applesauce and flew over me. And he looked at me like, and I started laughing. I mean, he didn't, he got the bee, just so you know, he got the bee. You know, it's like I could have gotten upset, but it was so funny. He just looked at me, I looked at him, and then I started laughing. And you have to have some fun. Now, it would have been intentional, a lot would have been different, but it was totally disgusting, so. Those are some of the things we've been busy with. The teachers, of course, you know, they rock the classroom and then this is all the extra stuff. So we've been doing observations. I believe that we've got, between Marianne and I know, we've got all of our first round of observations done for the teachers in the middle school and with the special ed. And we've been helping a little bit with elementary. And then we just need to do the post-op observations meeting, I've got some of those done, but not all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You've been busy.
All right, moving on to 6.3, the Board Committee reports.
We just had policy.
Yep.
And those are all, tonight, and then Mr. Nagal shared with us that they're working on that 600, what was the number on that one?
620.
620, that hopefully, well, yeah, we'll have that next time. Other than that, that was it for policy. Wally, do you have anything to add?
The 7:05 part that we discussed on investments.
Oh, yep.
Matt from, I daily got back to me and it is just what we talked about as far as, you know, we go through Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund. And so that was the very first thing he emailed back to me was, he said, you know, it's through the Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund, so all of that has to be audited anyway. And we definitely have over, you know, our, our biggest percent of any of our money is in there and we pull money out of the Minnesota Liquid Asset Fund. So that, we're completely covered by policy. I took the policy and just sent it right to him and I said, do we have any issues? And right back with the same thing. So we're in real good shape, no changes that we have to worry about.
Thanks for checking on that.
All right, thank you. All right, we, six point four, the superintendent report.
So I'm going to be the shortest of the three, maybe, maybe, maybe. Couple things, next week I'm, I will be gone, next Wednesday, I'll take off sometime later in the afternoon. I have a, a meeting Wednesday night. I'm going to sit down, one, one thing I, I told you I want to be able to do is put together all of these different action items that would be associated with bond. And good thing is Thursday in the Twin Cities, I'm, I'm on the finance committee for M A S A. So we have our finance committee meeting Thursday morning, so I'm meeting with some of the people, I'll be there Wednesday night and going down through that, looking at the protocol and I want to run it through with some colleagues. And so then that way we can have that to the board. Here's all the different components that you need to be able to look at, roles, responsibilities, what else not associated with it. And have a template for the board. So a couple of steps left with that. Crisis management lockdown today, I sent you an email, we put that out to the district. Again, this was a, you know, situation where we basically had some shrapnel based on something that took place. It was involving traffic violation that originated in Dilworth. And you know, this is a great example of, of why it's nice to have an S R O. Because it ended up that the person associated with the traffic violation, it was a hit and run incident and it's in Clay County's hands and, and law enforcement's hands. But the person was stopped on park and then decided that wasn't, was thinking, the person was thinking instead of really thinking well and decided to get out and, and then try to make a run for it. And Jeff got to put on his moves tackling the person and, and so it, but it was on our school property by the time that he was apprehended. So it spilled over into us, we got shrapnel because of that part. And, but lockdown was initiated and I, I was really, you know, when you're, you're getting a report from everybody as far as how the situation was handled and, and you look at all the different people that were involved with it, it was, when we, when we went back through it afterwards and had conversations, it, it was, it was approached very well. Leadership team worked on a statement, a joint statement together and just sent it to me. And then we just picked at it a little bit and, and by the time I got the email out to you guys, I think with, in about one minute, that other statement was going out to everybody. So it was, it was very quick timing within, probably within the hour. Jeff was still out front with the person as the email was going out. So that's how, but again, in this time of, of where people have, you know, phones and instant access, it's, it's hard to actually beat some of that going out. So, but it, it went, it went very well for a very interesting situation. Lots of, I, I want to just give you a good summary of all the professional development things that are going on so you can see the, the full gamut. This is really the old, the first time since I've, that I've been here that we've had a, a very well aligned, I think, a very well aligned professional development initiative for more of the, the admin cabinet. So this is, this is looking at all the principles, it's looking at all of our instructional leadership. So whether it be special education, technology, community education, all of those other support areas. We have all of that team going through this training. So the things that are going on, the first one there, you're, you're aware that I'm in this cohort, leadership cohort. There's about twenty, twenty district level administrators in multiple states, all the way from Virginia to Washington, to Illinois, Iowa, Missouri, a number of different states, probably about a handful from Minnesota, which is one of the reasons why we were able to host the kickoff that was in the Twin Cities in June. And then every month we do virtual meetings, Web X meetings, and that'll go through January. And then we also have the performance coaching at the same time. So we do a one hour webinar and all of us are on screen and, and so we're all going through the same materials and then talking about it. Some of the things are associated with how you approach the problem solving, a lot of things on culture and climate. So a lot of information on that, it's been, it's been very energizing. Dr. Joe Hill is the one that is doing the lead trainer with this through Giant Worldwide. We have one-on-one performance coaching also where we can look at our implementation plans specifically on what we're doing as a district, goal setting and, and then some opportunity to look at some of the resources that may help with that. All the Giant Worldwide content, we are able to download that information. I've actually put it into a shared folder for resources for the full admin cabinet so that they can utilize it for their site leadership as, as that will be coming. And then we have the capstone retreat in Nashville to end it. Hand in hand with that, then the full cabinet, besides having the shared information that's coming back that we can utilize on our own scale, we're also, that whole team is in a cohort. So there's six different school districts that have their full leadership team in this cohort. And so what happens is that's another webinac, a web, webinar, Zoom meeting that we do for, that I do for an hour, going through some more specific information. We do that, two weeks before we have our admin cabinet meetings. We run our admin cabinet meetings on the Wednesday of our instructional leadership meetings. So we run those in the afternoon at three thirty. We do a full cabinet meeting starting at nine and then we do a principal meeting at ten. So we go through all this information, the agenda for the instructional leadership team, all of that takes place in the morning. And then so that we have it all ready for that afternoon. So we're trying to really work on that alignment piece with it. We had a great professional development morning last Thursday. We, we went for a good three to three and a half hours just on talking about some of the goal setting and, and some of the long-term planning and going over some of the resources. So I, it is, it has been a very good team building process for this, for this group. So you can see all the work that they're, all of the P D that they have coming. So they have, we've got the cohort that allows them to have, the cohort for them provides other peers, the opportunity for them to have dialogue because they will have password protected access to get directly into some of these materials and, and talk with peers in multiple states. And then they have the virtual meetings that we'll have, I'll have, they will have the face-to-face ones, of course, as a team. We did a, back in August when we had two days with Dr. Hill, we did a hundred X team baseline diagnosis. Basically was looking at how well functioning of a team are you? And so we wanted baseline data on that. And then we will be getting back culminating at the end of the year in June, doing another benchmark diagnostic at that time. So they, again, they will, a lot of those videos, the, the digital resources, it's just, it's just very good reflective type of, of information and, and data. You started having some great discussions with, in a team setting. In fact, when we get into a work session and we talk about strategic planning and what else not as a board, I'm going to pull out some of those videos because it's really interesting. We had a great conversation about as we're going through, looking at the way people approach, whether it be the nurture type of voice, guardian type, looking at tradition compared to and look how people, it's basically looking at all the lenses of people looking at situations and why there's, you know, the individual differences that people bring to a committee. And to value that, that there's different voices. So some, some very reflective material. So lots of P D going on for, for the group. And I think you're starting to see some of those effects even in, in the reports. I think you're going to be seeing a lot more of that alignment to the goals and here's all the action plans that are associated with it. I think we'll see a lot of good alignment there. The, tonight's presentations go hand in hand with this next part. And basically what I was doing was pulling different resources so that we can talk about some of these things because I think there's some great examples from tonight. So when you look at leadership committee structure, and a lot of this stuff comes from multiple school board organizations nationally. And we've got, we have some examples that are perfect for this. The board has an organization committee, the operations committee, okay? Well, we also know that we have operations committee of the actual staff. And what's the purpose and function of each? So if you look at what comes out from most of the things from statewide organizations, school board committees. If it's school board only, remember those are public. These other ones aren't public. So we hit the school board committees where it's school board only, focus on vision and mission. And when we go through the strategic planning pieces, we'll hit a lot more on vision, mission, setting up the goals, beliefs, all of that. So focus on vision and mission, set the policies that are associated with that. Are there particular policies that are, that go hand in hand, for instance, for operations? And we know there's, there's a ton of them. And so when we hit, when we have committees of the board, then that committee, maybe that's associated with operations, may also need to be bringing some recommendations to policy as far as these are things that are real critical from our standpoint when you guys go meet about policy. So setting policies, setting broad goals, aligning to, and, and this is real critical when you, when you heard the conversations and reports from both of the principals. So the board committees focusing on the what. So if the what is student achievement, so you get the board committees setting up the goals. So if you look at the site goals that were coming out as we got into those site teams and them coming up with at their different levels, how to meet the world's best workforce. So whereas the board broader based, the whats. When we get into, and so the roles and responsibilities, monitor and recommend policies to the full board because that's where the power lies. Recommend pertinent goals to full board, align division and mission, broad-based goals. Operations may definitely say, you know what, for the Glendon site, you know, we think this is a critical need. And then the actual implementation of those goals will come from within the sites. So recommend pertinent goals, full board, align division and mission. Evaluate results, outcomes and monitor and adjust towards broad-based goals. And I, I feel bad because this is one of those things that we've just, you know, M S B A hits this in the trainings, but we really haven't had just a work session, just talking about what's the function of, of this, what's the purpose of this? And where does the delineation actually happen? So again, this is, this is information, again, not hitting any particular details, but using some of them as examples when we, when we look at the, some of the structure pieces coming up. Administrative and organizational leadership, develop district and site goals aligned to vision and mission. Develop implementation plans. So you notice the college and career readiness. You're hearing some very specific things that are being done at the site levels. So that's where we're getting into those implementation plans. It's, we want the kids to be college and career ready, so how is it going to be implemented? And that's what those site, site plans are really digging into. And that's where that structure of representative, representation from the stakeholders becomes critical. Because they have to be able to have those discussions, those meetings in a non-public where they can talk about, well, if we do this, this house can affect such and such in this group. That's more of the internal pieces. Again, you bring in, you figure out which stakeholders to have in on those and at what levels do you bring in different stakeholders? And notice that it's the how, develops district site implementation plans aligned to the how. So the board sets the what and then the actual people doing the day-to-day work, they create the how plans, the implementation plans. Monitor and adapt the district and site implementation plans. And you will see that ongoing and, and if it isn't, if you're not hearing about, you know, our, as we go through the year and you get these reports coming back from me, from the, any of the levels of administration, ask those questions, you know, is there my, is there adjusting that you're anticipating for next year based on how it's going? What are you anticipating with that? Do you, do you see this being an ongoing one and if so, how is it going to look next year? What will we expect as a benchmark? Does that, does that help? Because again, we're going to have strategic planning, just really getting more in-depth into this now. The reason I wanted to give you a copy of where things are at right now, Wednesday, the DL, or the instructional leadership team. So we started meeting, we spent some time, I gave you a copy of, of the existing stakeholder for representation and, and basically the leadership alignment for instructional. So that one has a lot of pieces to it because there are so many pieces to instruction in the first place. If you think of whether it be like, let's say the career, college and career readiness. Okay, so that's going to have to be a six twelve plan. But the middle school is going to need particular components, high school is going to need particular components. So they will set some of those goals. Then based on that, there's going to be other committees that are going to have to be involved. Because some of the committees may include professional development. Some of the committees may have to be in, it may be some of your newbie teachers, so you have the teacher mentoring teachers. It may be operations also that will be affected because as this shows, we know we're going to have people that are going to be leaving. And so if we're truly looking at college and career readiness and having facilities, having personnel, a lot of things are going to be affected and you, the thing we don't want to do and I think that, while we know it can happen, is that somebody goes and they serve, personnel serves on a committee and then the committee becomes the all-encompassing everything committee. And people don't want to serve on it because like anything else, you put your name on that committee and you didn't realize what you're getting to do because you get to do everything. And a lot of this is the hope that we have more shared leadership opportunities for people. Because if you take your site leadership teams, you could have somebody that should have that alignment showing what's happening from the site level and vice versa to the district level, back and forth. You should be able to have someone who's bringing that information, what is the professional development needs that we're seeing. So that also hits at the district level on that. So there's a lot of, what are the new teachers telling us at this site level compared to this site level, getting that to T M T? So that all of those different components, shared leadership, because you've got a lot of different people that have a voice then, all aligned to the different goals, whether it be site or district goals. So again, putting the people, the stakeholders at appropriate level. We had a great discussion about do you truly bring in parents and students? We had a great discussion about do you truly bring in parents and students at the instructional leadership level or do you have them at a committee level? Because if you bring one or two parents, one from K-5, one from six-12 and sit them around a table with eight or 10 other people that are in, have been trained in education from different, is that gonna be overwhelming for people? So, instead, you think of the policies that you as a board initiate and approve. Your policies on curriculum, your policies on community, community representation, so a few different ones that have that community representation, those are at committee level. Those are at committee level that we have to have it. So, when we look at curriculum and instruction, we want to have more parent representation. We have, we have different requirements that today, I just signed off on one for CTE, career and tech, technical ed. On that particular one, I sign off that we will have people representing from the community that are represented in the planning on the CTE, okay? And I think every time that, you know, Beth and some of the other ones do the program approval, there's particular sign-offs that are supposed to be done on those CTE programs. But have we been actually truly implementing some of that and following through that we have those people represented? So, we gotta make some of those changes. We gotta get more, that's where we need to have those stakeholders. We should have people from those businesses, from those career areas, actually at the table talking about what they need, what the kids should get exposed to. So, as we move forward, as we get this alignment in place, that's where we'll have the stakeholders, but putting, putting them in at the right levels. So, Wednesday at the instructional leadership team meeting, we're gonna have more discussion about that. Who are, again, not filling in names, but filling in what levels should the different stakeholders be there at, okay? Now, hand in hand with that, one thing, again, you know, as I've been reflecting on what you've had and as I've had some discussions with other SOUPs because, you know, this is the year of the, the most turnover, school board wise, that there's been for ages. So, when I went back and I looked at some different pieces of research and resources in general, looking at some different potential topics for work sessions. Because remember in 2000, as soon as you hit 2018, we're gonna, the board will sit down and figure out who they want reports from. You know, at what time do you want the different principal reports? When do you wanna put work sessions and what are the topics? So, the top of that next page are some potential work sessions. Some of you, we've, we've met over the past week talking about, you know, it's gotta be really good to have something on UFRS, coding and all that. I mean, it, it may be more than you want, but I'll guarantee you between Cindy and I will have a blast trying to put stuff together for you on it. And, and it's, it's good to have a general understanding of some of those things, to have the big picture. So, these are some of the, the ones that are probably recommended. Strategic planning, I don't think there's any doubt about that. We haven't done strategic planning, true strategic planning and as a board for, for a while. We haven't done it since I've been here. We've actually done the training on it, on that whole alignment. Who does, it, it clarifies some of the roles and responsibilities. It takes away some of that confusion. So, strategic planning is one of those. And for now, again, just think about, because we can talk about it down at the leadership conference in January. So, we've got some time. But strategic planning, capital allocation, you know, instead of waiting until, again, we're gonna have operations that will be going through all of our capital spreadsheets. So, there will be board representation on that. But again, is it something that the full board wants to have a discussion about planning for the capital requisition? Because it does go hand in hand when we're looking at facilities. Enrollment management, finance, one of the items that we talked about a little bit in, in one-to-ones and small group, budget process. How is that, how do we utilize some of those resources? UFRS, all of that, that lovely system and today I was watching from a fairly afar, it's not that many feet away, but when Cindy and Brooke and Jeannie are all having to go through the requirements of the new regulations, of GASB regulations and why our audit is delayed because of these type of requirements and all of the things that have to be done, it again comes down to the different reporting processes that we have to go through and then that the auditors have to adjust to also because of some of these federal requirements. Tax levy calculation process, climate surveying, short and long-term facility planning, world's best workforce, just a session just on that because that is one of our major goals. That is student achievement, that is such a component, a big component of it. And should we have just a work session talking about those different, different pieces and not just that one-time report that's gonna come up in November? Hopefully, the goals that you're hearing are aligned to it well so that as you get the updates from the principals on a monthly basis, you're hearing what's being done towards the world's best workforce goals. Because that, the college career readiness, I guarantee you, that's the big one for six-12. That's why they have it set up. But, these are some of the possible work session topics. Are there other ones that you would like to bring up that we, for the group to think about? Or is this hitting close to on the mark of some things you'd like to talk about as a group?
I think this is pretty close to some of the stuff that we talked about as individuals, but I mean, also just being flexible, if something comes up, then we hit it.
Sounds good. Because it'll be very, you know, the nice part is when you're all, I wanted to get this to you now because when, those of you who can go down to the leadership conference in January, it gives you a perfect opportunity. If, if you identify that we got two or three of these that we really want to hit in 2018, then it gives you an opportunity to check with some of the people at MSBA and also check with some of your peers at other school districts. Have you gone through some of this stuff? Who is really good at presenting or do you have any recommendations?
You know, the climate survey and that one comes up, but are we gonna be in the process where we're gonna do, be able to do a stakeholder survey?
Yeah.
Prior to December?
Not prior to December. The, the plan is to get the committee, get everything in place, all these committees in place so that we can do one in the winter survey.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Really don't want to May one?
No, no, we don't want to May one, definitely not. But that is one of those committees that has to be, we talked at the last ILT meeting, you know, we want all of the committee structure to be in place by the time we hit the workshops in January, but there's certain committees that need to be well in place beforehand so that they're ready to just get moving. We know that we already have the instructional leadership pieces, the world's best workforce, but some of these other ones, the, the culture-climate one, we have to have that stuff identified. We wanna be able to have that one in place, ready to go before Christmas break so that they can start looking at some of the different instruments that are there so that they're, they're flying with this, so that sometime hopefully in February or at the latest early March that we can give that survey out to the different stakeholders, so. Other thoughts?
Do you think the strategic planning, I mean, we are a little overdue on that, but when we start talking about those facility planning and we have those meetings, do you honestly think that's a good idea to kind of be doing both of those at the same time? I, just to me, it seems like it's, it's gonna be a lot of...
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a difference between actually setting up a strategic plan compared to going through the training on the process of strategic planning.
Yep.
I, I don't think we're ready to do setting new strategic plan goals.
Yep.
But I do think it's important that everybody has a, a pretty good overall understanding of strategic planning in general so that, even when we're looking at facilities, because that's part of, that's a good example of some with strategic planning. So, and I think if we don't do that, I think we're gonna have that much more confusion. I think there is the potential of having confusion as far as on whether it be role clarification or God, who's supposed to be doing this and is this ours or, because we really haven't gone through the whole vision, the mission, vision, goal setting, all of that process. And I think this'll help align it and delineate it. I think it'll be helpful for all of us.
Yeah, I thought you meant actually starting the process.
No, no.
I think that'd be kind of a little daunting right now.
I think everybody who's ever gone through that, it's, it's a, that's a pretty good year to year and a half process if we're gonna do it right.
Correct.
So, otherwise, are you, if you think of other ones that you'd like to see work session-wise, talk about it and then let's just come back to it in November. How's that sound? Okay. The last couple things, I just wanted you to have Joe had put out to me today and I think he put out to the district, but again, so that you have, and I'm not just reading them off to you, you've got hard copies of this. These are all the potential dates with our different fall athletics for tournaments. And so, when we have been having to try to figure out moving concerts and what else not around, remember just even the fact of notice from football to cross-country to volleyball, even though each one of these is section eight, notice one's a 3A, one's class A, one's class 2A. Some things are administered, are administered by section or region six, some are administered by region eight. So, you got multiple classifications administered by multiple regions. So, when we're, when, when Joe and, we don't have all of the dates of tournaments until the fall, that's why. Because there's multiple regions involved and some of them don't get those regional dates set because like with the Fargo Dome, there may be a concert all of a sudden comes up and all of a sudden they move, we thought we were gonna have a date, so they don't give us those dates. It could be a Thursday, Friday, it could be a Friday, Saturday for the football games and then they move everything else around that because those are big events. So, it's a trickle-down effect. Last thing, because I have had lately an inquiry and I've had it previously, so I thought in general, I would like to have you think about how you wanna proceed when we get requests about potential land or property acquisition. Because again, there are certain things that, protocol-wise, that you do not want to do in a public meeting. You have certain things that you, because in particular, you don't wanna have open me, and it's not an open meeting violation at all. This is part of, of statute. You know, if you think about when Morehead's purchased land and what else not, that is not open meeting. That's that, and it's not a violation of open meeting laws. You have certain things that allow you to be able to do negotiations in a private setting and this is the same thing. So, but you do need to make it public, the process that you wanna go about. So, whether it be that you have the board chair, I, I've had discussions with Brandon or Morehead about it and, and some different people. Who initiates or who has the first conversations with people if they have land that they wanna know whether the school's interested in doing something? Who do you want to have? Because you don't wanna have a committee unless you're gonna announce that you're going for a closed meeting because now that's, it's, that's an open meeting law that you can go into a closed meeting, but then you gotta bring it back. Whereas if you have the board chair and the superintendent or you have whomever it may be, meet with the individuals that own the property and then you bring the information back to the full board and go into a closed session. But you gotta have somebody who's initiating those conversations.
Do we have a policy that's been used in the past or no?
Um, no.
Is that something we want to come up with or is it just...
I don't, you, you know, it's, it's so dictated by statute as far as, I think you, you've gotta have a procedure and it changes based on, on, on the boards and... So, again, you don't have to decide this tonight, but it would be something that you gotta think about because like I said, I've, I've had it initiated, I had a call today just wanting to know, is there interest? And, and it affects a few different things because you think of your facility planning and whether it be if you're doing something with parking lots and if you want to have something with land for storage of your vehicles and what else not. And like I said, I, it's not something that the person wanted public, but...
Do you wanna come up with a procedure this evening? Do you wanna have a discussion and come up with it?
I think, I, I guess for now, I'm, I'm comfortable if you just think about it and, and unless you're comfortable with just, you know, having me initiate a meeting because basically all it is is, you know, what will, will take place is that the property owners is, or owner or owners would be looking at probably getting something, you know, checked for the value and, and then wanting to know, okay, here's what we're hearing and would you wanna bring it back to the board to see if they're interested and, you know, it's, it's not like it's, you, you're not making it public that you're going out looking for 50 acres and who's interested. This is more of those, one of those unique things with, based on proximity to school buildings, that maybe something all of a sudden has become available. It's one of those, so...
I have no problem with whether it's you or you and another board member, I don't think it really, whether it's the chair or another board member, I think you need to pick whoever is gonna best work, you know? Whether it's, hey, you know, Raleigh you're familiar with, whatever area, you wanna come, let's go for a ride and then you guys can present that, you know, in an email to the board.
Yeah, it, it's, that, I just need to know what you're comfortable with because again, it's, it's just one...
It's either a good deal or it's not.
I, I, I think it has, I think there's good merit in, you know, there's some positives with the potential of something like this as we're doing some, because it would be really good for the facility planning committees to know, okay, do you have something else there that opens up some possibility, so...
I think I'd feel comfortable you and taking a board member.
Okay.
And then you guys can report back to the rest of us with the information that's presented.
It's either a good deal or it's not, you know?
Exactly. And then you guys are gonna decide whether, yeah, okay, it makes sense if it doesn't. Any preference? I would say it, you know, it's, again, probably, well, it's, it's, it would be property and the dealworth. Close to that site. So, I don't know if that helps as far as trying to figure out who might be. I know Scott, you're in real estate, but you know, that's, you guys tell me.
I can tell you if it's a...
Thoughts? Because I'd like to be able to just say, okay, I'll call so-and-so and, and let them know that and try to set the time to meet with, with the owners. Preference?
Do either of you, you're both around operations, would one of you wanna meet?
That's the nice part because then whoever it is can also talk about operations and, because it really does hit operations. And the full board, this is one of those, the full board should have, you know, this information because it affects so many things.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's like a market evaluation you're looking at, I, I would have no problem, you know, looking at that from my end, but...
Probably makes the most sense.
But I'm fine, yeah, either way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you would do that, Scott, that'd be great.
Okay. So, what I'll do is when I know that people own it, we're gonna talk about it and then call me back. So, then once I get, I'll check your schedule and, and then we'll just let the board know once we've had the meeting whether, you know, and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting. If it means that we have to have a closed session just to talk about that piece, we can do that.
Right. Everyone, okay with that?
Yep.
That's it.
All right.
So, I didn't take, I may have taken a longer...
Oh, you took way longer.
You did, you were like 38 minutes.
You were just so long-winded, Brian.
Thirty, thirty-eight minutes.
I mean, the intern's like leaving now, I mean, it goes long.
I mean, hello, I think it's my husband's turn another year in this time.
Oh, Bob will forgive me.
Okay.
There's a lot of info. Sorry.
It's just so funny how you preface, I think I'm gonna be short. It's just so funny how you preface, I think I'm going to be short.
You never.
Okay, no better.
So much going on.
Okay. Moving on to 7.1, regular meeting of October 9.
Somewhat.
Okay. Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 8.1, under the business, under the consent agenda.
Total bills to be approved at this board meeting, $318,853.86.
All right. And then the treasurer's report is in there, the municipal assets account, activities account, donations, a bunch of donations for the middle school PBIS. We have decided that we're not going to list all of them in the agenda, but there is a page that says who they are and what they have donated, so people can see who they are for that. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Somewhat.
Amy?
Bobby.
Bobby. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.1, the audit. Looking for a motion to approve the audit.
We're going to table that.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was...
Yeah, I'm not done.
I make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.2, policies. This is the first reading of policy 701, establishment of adoption of school district budget. 702, accounting. Policy 704, development and maintenance of an inventory of fixed assets and fixed asset accounting system. Policy 705, investments. 706, acceptance of gifts. 707, transportation of public school students. 708, transportation of non-public school students. 709, student transportation safety. Again, this is the first reading, do I have a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
By Scott, is there a second?
Second. Oh, go ahead, Raleigh.
Second by Raleigh. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.3, this is the contract for James Nettleton as the interim building maintenance supervisor for the Dower site effective November 6, 2017, at the rate of 22 an hour. Do I have a motion?
Somewhat.
It's like in stereo. Okay, Lindsay. Is that by Lindsay? And a second by Amy. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Moving on to 10.1, we have the fiscal personnel committee meeting Monday, November 13 at 5 o'clock. This is the Dower Media Center, and it will be followed by the school board meeting at 6 o'clock. To make note that it is at the Dower site this time. Operations, or I mean, negotiations, we have negotiations on Monday.
Yep.
At 6:00. So we have the committee meet at 5:00. So we will meet them at 6:00.
Okay. October 30 at 5:00, meeting at 6:00.
All right. Anything else to add? Is that in Dower or Glenon? That is in Dower.
The board room. The board room. How are we sitting on policy? Do we need to schedule another date? Are we going to wait till we get through negotiations?
Let's get through negotiations and then...
Okay, I'm fine with that. You fine with that, Sandy, Raleigh?
You guys have done well getting through 7 minutes.
I think that's enough for you guys. Get through that, and then we'll...
Trying to get more to take on, even with the negotiations?
All right. Anything else to add? Okay. All right. So we are adjourned.